I'm just wondering if we could do a little bit of a roundtable. Everybody could kind of introduce themselves.
Sure, yeah. Well, who you folks are first and then we'll...
For sure. My name's Linda Michelle. I'm a nurse. I work at the hospital. I've been a member of this community for over 40 years. I started Bear Clan Patrol in Winnipeg over a year ago. And that's where I met Aaron Stevens. I thought it would be a great addition to our community. So, like I said, I trained over a year over there. And then I partnered with the Paw Renewal Corporation and Desiree Lambert. And we're trying to bring that, bring the same concept here to our community. Aaron?
Hi, my name's Aaron Stevens. I'm from Winnipeg, Manitoba. I just moved to the Paw this past fall. Love it here. Yeah, I've been with Bear Clan for about three years now. Me and James Fable, the founder of the second, were, it originally started a long time ago, but they restarted again about four years ago. So, me and James have been friends for a while. So, I started up with Bear Clan. It's just been a great thing. It's a great community thing. So, yeah, I've been, then I moved to the Paw and they've been talking about getting a Bear Clan going here. So, I think it's a great idea. So, I've been helping out. Thank you.
Desiree?
Desiree Lambert, Executive Director of the Paw Community Renewal Corporation. Linda and I partnered on an application to the Neighborhood Renewal Fund last year to apply for some funding to start up the project Bear Clan here in the Paw. And I continually provide support and administration and as many ways as possible to both Linda and Aaron as we pursue this project.
I'm Lorraine Papo. I am the Street Chaplain for Northern Gately Community Chaplaincy. And I have been invited by Linda to sit on the Women's Advisory Council for Bear Clan.
All right. Thank you all for coming. So, I'll let my councilors introduce themselves.
I'm Chad Zoller, Speaker, Counselor for County of the Paw.
Larry Forster, author of the Paw. Part of the committee with the Community Renewal Corporation.
Howard, Counselor, County of the Paw.
Audrey Murphy.
Counselor.
Carrie Atkinson. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Trigale, Counselor.
And I'm Herb Texas.
So, please, tell us about yourselves.
All righty. So, Bear Clan Patrol of the Paw. What is Bear Clan Patrol? Bear Clan Patrol is a community-based solution to crime prevention. Its intention is to provide a safe sense of safety, a sense of safety, solidarity, and belonging to both its members and to the community we serve. This is achieved in a nonviolent, non-threatening, nonjudgmental, and supportive manner primarily through relationship building. The patrol demonstrates a way of being that works in harmony with the broader community rather than in conflict with it through relationship building that encourages rather than seeks to defeat. Where did we come from? Bear Clan Patrol originated in northern Winnipeg in the 1990s. It was developed due to need for those neighborhoods to give their residents a sense of belonging and a sense of safety. The clan's structure and the related responsibilities provide a balance and direction for our lives as indigenous peoples. The patrol was organized as the Bear Clan because this clan historically has had the responsibility for peacekeeping. I know originally Aaron had mentioned that it did start out a while ago in Winnipeg. And then with the death of Tina Fontaine, it kind of had a resurgence in the community, primarily in the north end because the residents did not feel safe and they needed something to give them that. Oops, sorry. What is our vision? The vision of Bear Clan Patrol is to provide restoration and maintenance of harmony within the community. We'll do it by promoting safety, promoting and providing safety, conflict resolution, mobile witnessing, and crime prevention, maintaining a visible presence on the streets, and providing an early response to situations as well as acting a resource, a resource or an advocate for community members.
That's mobile witnessing.
So, mobile witnessing is when, basically, when you're out on patrol and if you see a crime in progress, there's an opportunity to not act as the police, but maybe intervene. Maybe somebody's going to break in somewhere or do something or commit an assault or there's an argument ensuing. We're just kind of there to try and intervene, to reduce the need of the intervention of the police.
Okay.
How does it work? Outreach is a primary objective of the Bear Clan Patrol. We achieve this by taking the initiative to directly communicate with community members while actively patrolling the streets of our community. Patrol members may offer gifts of clothing, food, juice, and water as part of this outreach effort. Discussions with the public should reinforce the Bear Clan Patrol commitment to respond to public concerns such as the recovery of hazardous items and potential searches for missing persons. Did you want to speak about what we do in Winnipeg or what we have done?
Okay. In Winnipeg, we usually go around on our walks. And the big one is picking up needles, used needles. There is a meth problem crisis in Winnipeg. And it's slowly, the sad thing is it's slowly moving up to the reserves and to the smaller towns and stuff like, and we go around, we pick up needles. We, we pick them up in schoolyards and stuff. We try, we like to be out there seen by the, you know, by the community members and the children especially and stuff, just to let them know like they live in a safe community. We want them, everybody to know it's safe, you know. And we go around, we hand, you know, we hand out school supplies to the children at, you know, school time. And we participate in parades and, and any, anywhere like people say, you know, we need some volunteers. So, we're a group of volunteers that are ready to go at all times. We've assisted in searches for people and also I do, do, like when people go missing, like lately, last one I think was Eduardo, Eduardo. We had about 100 volunteers ready to go right away. Like they just, one person called Bear Clan, we can get organized ourselves and get out there. And we've been trained in searching and forensics and stuff like that. A lot of us have been trained in that. So, we're able to do searches and we have the equipment and ready to go. Also, we're sort of a, in, in the north end, there's sort of a, people don't like to talk to the police. You know, I don't want to say, I, I moved to the Paw and I noticed that it's very quiet, sunny town and there's very good relations. But in there, there's, the police and the community relations aren't that strong. But people have an easier way of talking to Bear Clan or people from Bear Clan to tell them, you know, like, you know, I'm seeing a lot of activity here. So, we act sometimes as a buffer between the police and that, you know. It's more easier for them to talk to or, or, you know, or people can call us and say, hey, look, I live here and here and there's, I have people leaving needles beside my, in my backyard or people are leaving needles beside my business and stuff like, and we'll be down there to, we'll come down right away and pick them up and stuff, you know. We're, we're trying to prevent, you know, like incidents where like in a schoolyard, some kids found a needle and they played doctor and one of the kids poked the other kid, you know, and this is a used needle and it's, it's only a matter of time till it gets more and more serious. We're trying to get away from that. And I don't want to try to scare, you know, like I know people do the meth scare and everything and it creates all that. But I mean, also, it's a, it's just a, a great organization. It's a great idea, you know, volunteering and, I guess, yeah. Since I've joined the Bear Clan, we've done a lot of saving people and sadly, we've had to like recover bodies and stuff and find, find people and find vulnerable missing youth. That's a pretty, you know, a lot of times there'll be a runaway from a foster care and, and we assist in helping find them, you know. A lot of times, the police are busy there, that, you know, that why can't we just, you know, an extra help looking for these people? And when, I think the most rewarding time is when you see a family just, I remember this one young man, he had drowned in the river and, and the, the family was on the shore just distraught, right? And they just, they just wanted to find their son, right? And I think that was one of the, when we found the son, we recovered him in the river and stuff and just to have closure, for them just to have that closure and just to know that people, we were out there 24 hours on the river searching for that, for that man till we found him. And then that, that kind of just, it helps. Because I know like, I don't know, you know that feeling when you lose your cellphone, right? You're just panicking, you know. I can't imagine not knowing where my child is, you know. It's just kind of that same feeling, you know. And where you're just like, who do I call? You know, you're, you're calling, you have police looking, but like you feel like you need more help, you know. Like that's where you can, that's where the Bear Clan has, comes in a lot. We're like, you know, hey, you know, can, can you help us find, you know? Sometimes we've had people call and ask us to find their pets and we have to, they say, okay, we kind of have to draw a line somewhere, you know. But, but, you know, it's, it's, we do a wide, a wide range of groups, of active, you know, from, you know, some serious stuff to like, and we do some great fun stuff, you know. And we walk as a group and for me, it's good exercise too at the same time. And we have just awesome volunteers.
How many members do you have?
In Winnipeg, it...
I think there's 1,100 members in Winnipeg.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And there's different neighborhoods. And right now, they're really trying to push so they have more coverage. The great part that really attracted me was the grassroots part of it, where you're getting out on the street and not only are you being visible to the community members, but you're, you're being there for the people that might need you. Maybe you're walking past somebody who hasn't eaten all day and you're handing out a sandwich or, you know, obviously there are street workers there and maybe you're handing them out harm reduction supplies. You know, you're, you're reaching out and you're, you're making a difference. You're, you know, you're giving gloves, you're just giving them a kind word, whatever. And we know that, that there is a drug problem here in town. And we know that they do have a harm reduction policy and procedure thing through the primary health. And we know that they're handing over 4,000 needles out per month. Where are all those needles going? Like they're going to end up in our park? Yeah.
4,000 needles?
Yeah. One month, they reported handing over 4,000 needles.
Is that every month?
I'm not sure of the specifics. Like I've asked for numbers, but that was reported to me on one occasion, like on one month. And the...
Would that be an average month, do you think, or a supply month?
I'm not sure. I, I can't speak for that. But I know they are finding needles. I know they're finding needles in like the Kelsey housing estates. I know they're finding them in Devon Park, you know, along the riverbank, in OCN. But the drugs are here. And I've had talks with Ingrid Olsen, who is the head of the RHA, and she is very supportive. And she said, you know, like anything you need, if you need Sharps, containers, gloves, like we can definitely donate that to you. It's, it's a win-win, right? We're going to be out there walking, we're going to pick up, you know, hazardous materials, you know, any kind of weapons.
So, are you operational now?
Pardon me?
Are you operational now here?
Actually, our first patrol will be April 5th.
April 5th?
And we'll be operating, as we move further in the presentation, we'll talk about when our patrols will be. So, who is involved? The directors, the volunteers, the council of women, community stakeholders, and Bear Clan Patrol Inc. of Winnipeg. Why do we need it? Bear Clan is community people working with the community to provide personal security for our community in a non-threatening, non-violent, nonjudgmental, and supportive way. It helps with crime prevention by providing our community with a sense of safety. It's a measure of harm reduction. How? By being visible. So, we're going to be visible mostly on the weekends and then we're going to tailor our patrols to, to when the community feels like, when we feel like we need to. When and where do we patrol? Patrol schedules are determined by volunteer availability. So, obviously, the more volunteers we have, the more area we can cover. Our hours of operation right now, we've kind of set like the busy times, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 6 to 8. We're looking at possibly an afternoon patrol on the Saturday just because there's a lot of activity in town. We might add a Thursday, which just depends. We're going to respond to the needs of the community.
Why is that considered a busy time?
There's a lot of traffic on, on the weekend in town. Like if you go uptown on a Saturday afternoon, there's a lot of people in town. We're just going to see, like right now, we're going to work with that just because a lot of people come into the community and travel to town on the weekends.
So, if, I'm not sure if exactly the things you will or won't be dealing with, but if somebody's intoxicated, I should say, from being, just causing an issue on the street, would you be, is that something Bear Clan is going to...
Yeah, so something in which we differ from Citizens on Patrol. I know Citizens on Patrol, they do a lot of work, but they don't engage in any interaction with anybody. Bear Clan functions in a way where we relationship build. So, maybe we would, we would talk to them, we would see if they were safe. I know when we participated in the patrol and we walked with the firemen, we did encounter somebody that was on the streets that was intoxicated. And we just make sure that they're safe, that, you know, we act as an advocate or a resource. Do you need medical attention? Are you okay? And we just ensure safety. And then, of course, if they're, if the behavior is changing or they're becoming aggressive, then we always ensure that we're, we're never alone. We would never, I would never go up to somebody by myself. I would always make sure I had somebody with me and then we would call the police if we needed to. So, that's where that mobile witnessing would come in, right?
To mention stakeholders. How many stakeholders do you have? Do you know, kind of sort of, that value to this community?
So, right now, we're, we're trying to, like the NRHA is obviously very supportive of us there. They're willing to give us, you know, the Sharps containers and stuff. The Paw Renewal Corporation, we applied for the grant. OCN's willing to help and patrol, you know, join us on patrol anytime. Just whoever...
North of 53 has made a donation as well.
North of 53. It's just, we're just kind of reaching out to people right now. We got a bunch of donation letters going out and not necessarily for money, but maybe you want to, you know, donate some water, donate some sunscreen, like we're going to be walking in the summer, donate some gloves or, you know, anything of the sort.
Thank you.
We are like nonprofit. We do not have a budget. We don't, we're kind of, and we partnered with Lorraine, who has been very kind to us. We did our first day training this weekend and it's kind of like a win-win. She's allowing us to use the space as our main patrol start. We'll start at 155 La Rose and then branch out from there. But in turn, we hopefully, we can attend different community, community functions. Maybe we attend the Canada Day Parade and do face painting and, and maybe we ask the public, donate an unperishable food item. And then we give that to the soup kitchen. Maybe we attend a blizzard game and ask for like tubes and mits and then we hand them out to whoever we see on the street that needs them. So, our drive is to help people in any, in any capacity.
Good question. What about like, for instance, in front of the high-rise because you get a large accumulation of street people that are intoxicated and drinking while they're there? And quite often, it's between those hours that you pointed out up there, that you're between 6 and 8, quite often, it's during the day as well. How would you deal with these people that are in these vicinity that are bothering the retired older people or the people that are going from, you know, trying to conduct business in the banks, but they have to get past these intoxicated people that are confronting them?
Yeah. So, again, we're not here to act like the police. We're not here to tell people what to do. What we want to do is develop relationships. So, maybe if I see Joe Schmull on the street and he's intoxicated and maybe asking Sally for money as she's walking into Ace or True Value or whatever, maybe I'm going to go up and talk to him and distract him. Maybe I'm going to say, how are you? Maybe I'm going to give him some respect, develop a rapport, and just talk with them. I know getting away from this, me and my children, we would do little things throughout the community just to, I don't know if you ever seen, but we do the random max of kindness. And that was something as a family that we did together. So, maybe we'd go in Candy Cane parking lot, maybe we'd take money to the vending machine or hand out hot chocolate in the winter or something. But we would always, when we approached people who we seen on the street, they'd be like, oh, it's you again. You know what I mean? And it wasn't, we weren't met with aggressive attitudes or anything like that. It was like a smile because then they recognized us, recognized us. So, hopefully, as the Bear Clan Patrol develops a relationship with the people on the street, maybe we can encourage that positive behavior. Maybe that will change the way they behave, hopefully. So, every Bear Clan Patrol volunteer will wear the high visibility vest. On patrol, we might encounter people that are at risk. We might see drug paraphernalia such as needles, syringes, crack pipes, weapons. We might see unconscious or intoxicated individuals and we might see crimes in progress. The mobile patrol is something that we want to add later on. When available, a mobile patrol may be employed at the same time as the foot patrol. This vehicle shall involve one female and one male who will maintain radio contact with the patrol leaders. The vehicle will increase the overall patrol footprint and provide better, better ability to carry bulky items such as clothing, water, and other items available for patrol distribution. This capability can also provide rapid response to any patrol member requirement or potential safe ride requirement by encountered individuals. So, in Winnipeg, we also did mobile patrol. They had the walking people and then they had a vehicle that people would use and then we'd carry. I know they have a lot of donations of like bread, water, muffins, day-old food from different stores or whatever. And besides handing them out like walking, the mobile patrol would carry all this and distribute those items to different community members as well. And in addition, it also provides a rapid response, right? Say if you find somebody who's unconscious, you know, whatever, and you just need more hands on deck to help with the situation, then there's that availability as well. Safe walks. A safe walk is a scheduled or unscheduled walk that provides an escort to a person or persons. I know in Winnipeg, if there was something going on like, like the fireman walk, maybe we would walk with them, like not only to show support and solidarity for our community members, but a visible presence to say, hey, you have our support. And maybe that's an FASD walk or maybe that's a Relay for Life walk or something. Oftentimes in Winnipeg, they would press that Bear Clan to 10 just to provide that support, any kind of like security, just to help out. Volunteer patrols will only provide safe walks or escorts if they feel that it is safe to do so. Safe walks and escorts are to be provided in teams of three or more and teams must be mixed, of mixed gender. So, sometimes on patrol too, people are on the streets of Winnipeg, like the last time we walked a couple weeks ago in Winnipeg and some lady came up to us, she didn't feel safe because she seen a gentleman on the street. So, then we might walk with her down the street if she's not feeling safe until that gentleman's out of sight. Or we might watch her, you know, walk across the street to get on the bus kind of thing. Obviously, it's different in the Paw, but... Communication is key. The Bear Clan Patrol employs two-way radios for interpatrol communication and personal, personal cell phones may be used for urgent situations where privacy must be maintained. So, each patrol group will have a two-way radio and will communicate with each other where we are, where our location is, and if we need any, any urgent help from like the mobile patrol or say another group. I know in Winnipeg, we patrol specific areas. So, we started out, you know, this street, this street, this street. We were all visible and could see each other and we'd say, you know, moving forward or we relay where our location was, which street we were on, just so we always have that. Or if we were assisting a community member, then everybody would kind of hold and say, okay, we're assisting this community member or... Safety. As you can see, we have a big thing of safety. We have a safety waiver that will have all of our volunteers sign. Talks about respect, using the radios in a clear, disciplined manner, always being aware of your surrounding, never attending any situation alone, never entering backways or alleyways without first confirming with patrol leaders, never chasing or pursuing people, maintaining integrity, and then wearing the vest to identify that you're with Bear Clan Patrol.
Do you carry any liability insurance as a group?
No. And that's part of the volunteer process. You sign the waiver. You are responsible for your own actions and you're doing so voluntarily.
There's a bit of a movement in Manitoba to start suing volunteers.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. But anybody that's volunteering will be, and it's the same as they do in Winnipeg, all their volunteers, they sign a waiver.
Yeah, the waiver doesn't, what does that right to do? All that really does is leave the volunteer on the hook. If something happens and somebody dies on the street and a family member decides to sue, you know, the volunteer will be the one getting sued?
I think we're protected under the Good Samaritan Act.
Yeah, as I mentioned, there's a movement in Manitoba to start suing volunteers.
Yeah. I don't know, that's, is it, well, after, I don't know, we'll have to see when this, if that ever happens.
I think we did touch base on that with, was that we talked about? We did discuss that with, but I can't, with probably the details.
I have to go back to my office and I know it's come up in conversation before as well.
So, personal conduct is very important. We want respect within the patrol, respect with all the community members that we deal with. We want to set a good example, respecting the laws, respecting values and the dignity of all persons. And if the conduct or personal conduct of any volunteer is unbecoming, they will be asked to discontinue patrol.
Do you have a home base that you work out of right now?
Yeah. Right now, we're going to work out of 155 La Rose, which is Living Water Soup Kitchen, which is the soup kitchen that Lorraine runs like Monday to Friday. And it's a great location to start, just right by the GM Dinger ship. So, who should join? You, all of you. How would this benefit me? Volunteerism is a wonderful way to give back to your community. The patrol can provide you with an opportunity to develop new skills, build on existing experience and knowledge such as leadership, adaptability, teamwork, problem-solving, communication, time management, and improved interpersonal skills. Social interaction has been proven to improve mental and physical health. It builds confidence. It gives you a chance to make a positive impact in the world you live in. You gain new perspectives by opening your minds. Helps you build bridges of understanding and you will meet people from all walks of life, develop connections, and therefore empower each other. How will this help my community? Over time, as relationships within the community are established, it is likely that feedback will provide, be provided by individuals, agencies, businesses, and other stakeholders. It is important to listen carefully in a nonjudgmental manner, take note of those providing feedback and their contact information. Recommendations and suggestions in, to assist in our work should also be noted. We are hopeful that this patrol has, have a positive impact on our community by increasing the safety level for our residents. Any questions?
I know they're volunteers, but is there like child registry checks done or criminal record checks on the volunteers that are volunteering for the Bear Clan Patrol? They're going into the schoolyards and talking with his children and going to different functions?
We're actually not going into any schoolyards. And part of the patrol application is we do ask if they are willing to get a criminal record check in future if needed. The only time they would need that kind of check is if we move forward to youth patrols, which is something we've also entertained before or since. We thought about having youth patrols, just getting the youth involved. And in those circumstances, we would definitely be requiring those checks. But right now, if you're actively patrolling as a volunteer, you are never alone with anybody. You are in a group and we emphasize that strongly. There may be some people that do have a criminal background. We're not holding it against anybody. You're volunteering, you're walking, you're giving back to your community. If you behave in a way where your behavior is not great, then we may ask you to stop patrolling with us.
So, you've had what, one or two registration nights in the Paw?
We've had a few registration nights. We've been out to blizzard games, KQRA, just different areas, trying to get the word out there. We've given interviews on the radio for Thompson Winnipeg here.
And how many people have you, have stepped forward in town here?
Right now, we have about 30 people that are signed up to volunteer. We're really emphasizing the fact that because you want to step forward as a volunteer, it doesn't mean you have to commit to Friday, Saturday, Sunday, every week. If you can give me a Friday... If you can give me a Friday once a month, if you can give me your Saturdays twice a month, that is fantastic. The schedule is up to the volunteer.
In Winnipeg, we usually have about thirty people per night, but it's usually, one night will be like, say, the investors group wants to help out, so they'll come out for one night and there'll be like sixty people one night. There'll be usual, there's usual like twenty volunteers that are there normally. And it's, now it's around Wednesday to Sunday. So it's those five or five days that there's always a large group now. And then the next day, say, some staff from Walmart, you know, like twenty of them got together and hey, we want to go out one night. So people are having a competition at this other insurance company and they have these Fitbits and they need to fill their Fitbits for, to win their competition, right, for steps taken. And they went out there and they, and they won, right, because they came out every night for a week, you know, and walked steps. But I mean, it's, it's, every day it changes, you know, it's different volunteers. But I mean, there's a group of us normal like that are always there.
The regulars.
The core, yeah, the core group. And a lot of the thing I like brought to too is, I know in the past like situations come up where, you know, maybe there's a missing hunter or something and you'll hear about it in the news and you'll like, you know, I want to help, but it's, for me personally, it's like, oh, you know, someone else will do it or, you know, but you know, I'm really shy, you know, I don't want to go by myself and, you know, go and do it. But if you're in a group, you're like, hey, you know, are you going Linda, Lorraine, are you going? Or Desert, are you going? Yeah, okay, let's all go, you know, that's kind of how it works too, you know. Suddenly, we'll have everybody like that are comfortable with each other, like, let's all go there at once. And then you've got thirty volunteers, you know, and that's also how BearClan works too. So I mean, it's, it varies, but yeah, that's usually how our, how the nights go.
So we have been invited to UCN too, we'll present to them. We're hoping like moving forward, we can get involved in different programs in town. Maybe it becomes a part of your community rotation as a nursing student. You come out and you volunteer, you put some volunteer hours in. Maybe it's a part of the fine option program where you come out and volunteer. We're really thinking big and trying to get as much people volunteering. I think it's, it's better for our community, it's healthier, it's, we have more productive citizens, people are happier and people feel, generally feel good about themselves when they're doing something and giving back.
Great, thank you for coming. Wish you well.
Thank you for having us, we really appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
One point two, Staff Sergeant Brett Lemieux, breakdown of information. Everybody look at it?
Yeah.
What are we gonna do by tomorrow?
Can I yep?
Please do.
Brett was supposed to be here, I'm not sure why he wasn't. I did have a meeting last week when we were in Winnipeg with Public Safety Canada. They don't have a whole lot of monies and I did explain some of the issues we were having with this. I think with the information we have here, I suggest we go to the province with these stats and see if they'll fund another officer through the province and not through provincial. Because in all reality, there was almost seventy thousand dollars of mental health in CFS. And if you look at the intoxicated public place and disturbing the peace, six hundred and sixty-four of seven hundred and thirty-eight people were transient or homeless.
So why are we paying?
So why are we paying for this? I think we need to go to the province on this. And even if it helps with getting them to come to us to the other communities, whether it's going through Swampy Cree and saying, these are people that we know are from your designated areas, we want some funding to pay for this.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Get another provincial police officer.
That's kind of, really?
Yeah, good job. Don't let it go to your head.
Okay, we'll get on that.
Okay, everybody's good with that idea?
Yeah, well.
After I did all these stats, I was so.
Yeah.
I know, for sure. I know.
MKO?
MKO was part of it, but Swampy Cree is covering specific to the areas we're talking about. Because there's seven First Nations communities under Swampy Cree. So even to get a meeting with them and kind of let them know what's going on.
Okay, landfill dump fees. Okay, so I asked for this to be put on the agenda. Because I've talked to a few people in the community who have buildings that may need some attention. And they've, they've indicated one of the reasons that they haven't demolished their fire damaged properties is because of the dump fees. So I wonder if we can throw this on the table as a, as maybe put together a working group or a committee or something to, to have a look at this. Because if, if dump fees are the reason that, say, I think there's three or four homes on Taylor now that need to be demolished, right? And the neighbors are complaining, you know, why aren't these homes being destroyed? Then I think it's something we need to look at.
Wouldn't insurance policy, would you do that?
It all depends on.
If you have insurance.
Yeah. What's included on the policy?
You said five percent.
Yeah, I spoke to Cook and Cook Insurance and they advised that normally debris removal is factored into a house insurance at five percent of their limit.
Yes.
Of the what?
Five percent of their limit.
Right, so in, so say for instance, I'll tell you a true story. We have.
No, don't tell me a true story.
I'll lie to you. We recently reviewed our insurance premium and program for our hotel after the Gateway Hotel fire, right? That's when you check. And one of the things we discussed was in the event that the hotel burnt to the ground, what would it pay for dump fees? Five thousand dollars.
Oh, really?
And we calculated what it was going to be and it was going to be somewhere around a hundred grand in dump fees based on the town's fee schedule. It was mind blowing.
Wow.
And I don't think people in general realize how much our dump fees are when a building is destroyed. And I don't think they have enough insurance.
So when Mary Duncan burnt down there, did they pay?
Who didn't have dump fees on? Your average, one of the commercial buildings that was in town cost probably twenty, twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five.
That one on the Hawaii?
Yeah, it's, it's not cheap.
And it's out, and we're out of whack with other communities?
Nope.
Not really.
Yeah, it's insane when I look at that.
Nope.
It seemed insane.
I, I get it, right? So we have to find a way to address the problem, right? Come up with a solution. I'm not sure what the solution is, truthfully. But if, if neighbors are complaining that they have these unsightly buildings on their streets and the people who own them are saying they can't afford the dump fees, there's got to be a middle ground there somewhere of how we can deal with this. But I'm not sure what it is.
But then if they build within twenty-four months.
You get half of the feedback.
You get half of the feedback.
Yeah.
And I'd recommend it if you don't build within twenty-four months, maybe we could give you twenty-five percent back for cleanup.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the answer is.
Or if you're rebuilding, give it a little higher, so.
Yeah.
Or you want to do a one-time only thing of, okay, you got two months as a, as a community pride cleanup thing, you got two months to get everything down, free dump fees for.
That's a good idea.
Big buildings and that's it, after that you go back to.
Twenty, if you get it done in twenty nineteen, that's it, there's no dump fees for.
I think you come up with a ceiling price for it's, you know, whatever. It has to be a max. Like just, just go up with a max. I mean, obviously barring, if it's, you know, a massive mass structure, then, but I mean, for a regular residential house, no more than, I'll come up with a fee fifteen hundred bucks, two thousand bucks.
Yeah.
And then that way, then you don't have the guy, poor guy burnt down the month after.
Yeah.
So would you go to something like a dollar per square foot?
That's what you said to me.
Yeah. You know, like two thousand square foot home would cost you two thousand bucks.
When we were at, I'm gonna change gears a bit, when we were at AMM, there was some, some interesting discussion. And one of them had to do with group think and the token no guy, devil's advocate.
Yeah.
And you know, an issue like this might be a good time to, to try something like that, you know? Rather than just come up with a very quick decision tonight, you know, we should research it a bit and we should have a couple of people who say, no, leave it, it is, and a couple of people who say, no, let's change it, right? And then come back to a committee meeting in two or four weeks and, and let's, let's make a decision. An informed decision, rather than just, you know, fifteen hundred bucks or a thousand or free or whatever.
Because it's gonna be sound involved, isn't it?
Yeah, because we've talked to engineering, get some history, you know, what are these things costing now? What are other communities doing? What do we want to do with our community? You know, because there's nothing saying we have to be like Swan River. We can be, we can be us, right? So I, I would propose that we break into a couple of groups and come back in a couple of weeks or four weeks, whatever we need.
Sure.
All right, so who wants to go on the yay side? Trevor? Trevor and Larry, and the no side is Chad and Bill?
Uh, sure.
There you go. Bring us your reports.
We're no, we're no, eh?
You're a no.
Pretty easy, no.
Yeah.
No, it's no.
Any questions?
And you want me to have a bunch of agenda in four weeks?
Stay in for it.
Okay.
Carrie?
Yeah, it's kind of churning a little bit here. So every piece of debris that comes from a house that's burnt is all part of a dump fee? Or is there certain portions of that that is?
Every piece.
If it was sorted out, there could be.
Yeah, if it's sorted, the cement.
If you sort it, does it make a difference?
Yeah, it does.
Because it can go in your burning pile and.
Okay.
And if you could call the nails out of the wood, it would be, that wood would be free?
That's true though.
It is a true, if you sat there and pulled all the nails.
That was my only question.
Okay, so we'll come back in four weeks. Great. Community Wellness Challenge.
This was a presentation we had last time when the information was found. We're already sponsoring in kind, four thousand, three hundred and seventy thousand, which makes us a partner at thirty-five hundred plus. Does council want to do more or do they believe that that's plenty?
I think it's plenty.
I think it's plenty. Dumping it outside of that.
Okay.
Set up, strike the committee.
There you go. Okay, the electrician, town-employed electrician, as you recall during.
We have Brian.
Is your board?
Did I miss one?
You dumped two, actually.
Oh, okay, there you go, I'm just trying to get this meeting, there you go. Museum board.
So we have a request from the museum board to appoint Brian Rock to the board, so we would require a resolution.
Yeah, sounds good.
Sounds great.
Yep.
Does that fill you guys up, Trevor?
Uh, one more, I mean, there's that, he's a T-tied or name wrong. There's one more spot that he might be interested in, but yeah, so one more left.
Good.
Uh, okay, four point three, again, I asked this to be brought up. Parking on Bignell Avenue around the Twin Motors property. I've received complaints from some of the residents in the area about the parking situation. I don't know if anybody's had a look at.
I don't really go that way.
You guys still know?
I can show you pictures.
Like good times in Twin Motors?
Yeah.
This is the back. There's buildings, temporary buildings that are located actually on our property.
Really?
These buildings now too?
Well, there's an art coach earlier. Sorry, I'll jump in on this too. This has been a continual fight for, for many, many, many years, actually.
But if you look at the hydro line.
I also received a call and we looked at the measurements and there's also a temporary aqua building that would be on the right of way being our property. I have been nicely trying to deal with the situation and they move it and the owners did speak to me and says, well, I can't control them, they park back there all the time as much as I tell them. So I had sent a email, it's on the front of there, I think it was, sorry Trevor, I just, for one second. On March eleventh, I sent an email advising of the vehicles and temporary building being on the town property and requested a plan of action within ten calendar days. And I was supposed to get a plan, I've received nothing to date.
Have they moved that trailer in the way?
I haven't been back there today.
I didn't see an apple trailer today.
No, it's right behind the grass.
There was one litter, that was behind the grass, that's all right. So A, we either enforce those bylaws or B, we put a no parking in there as my, and just automatically have someone to. Because this is, this is creating a problem.
It's a construction trailer, it was across the road.
It's a mobile office, yeah.
For them?
Yeah.
Really?
Yep.
And in saying that, I also did contact, we talked to, why can't, the commissioner's office when we were at AMM and I sent them all our bylaws and stuff and they're gonna be getting back to us on providing that service.
Really?
Some costs and, and what plan they would do for providing that service to us. So there's a couple of things here. There's look at commissioners enforcing our bylaws and considering having no parking in that area.
Is it a no parking area already?
No. It's just loosey goosey all over.
So what bylaw would you be reinforcing if we, if you're allowed to park?
We would put no parking on our road.
No, I know, but if there's people parking there now.
Oh, sorry, yes, traffic bylaw would be amended to include no parking in matter.
Yeah, but today, they're allowed to park there.
No.
No.
We have a parking bylaw in place that's been there since like nineteen seventy-four or something, it's quite old. And it, it talks about parking on town property and how you have to move every twenty-four hours or two hours or something. So there's a bylaw in place for this.
So those look like all personal vehicles that wouldn't be there all the time.
That's, some of them aren't there.
A lot of the, the, there's a lot of the dealership vehicles there too.
Yeah.
A lot of vehicles.
No, I've never been back there, I'm just trying, I've seen that picture there and I know what we're talking, but I just, you know, there's that one row on the south side that would be backed up to the, on their lot, but.
Right, those are his resale vehicles, yeah? But there's, so if you vision the street, the hydro poles are the town property now. And so they use it consistently and regularly for their vehicles, customer vehicles, loading vehicles, all that kind of stuff.
I believe it's two feet from the actual building itself is where the property is.
Your property is approximately two point six feet of the existing dealership building.
Yeah, take our map.
As you can see from the additional pictures, vehicles are parked completely on town property. It would also be appear that temporary building is also located on a public town property. And vehicles that would be parked parallel to the street would mean no closer than fifteen point five feet. So it's definitely infringing on.
The town street.
The town street.
If it's there longer than twenty-four hours.
Half of the time, you can get maybe one vehicle through, which is not the way you park on the street. It's a street and I think that's what's confusing people. It's, it's a street, but it appears as a back lane.
It is, it is big.
Yeah.
Arguably, we don't take very big care of it, right, it's pretty rough most of the time. But it is a street. My suggestion would be to invite Mr. Hokus or one of his representatives to a meeting with council and maybe discuss the situation.
Sure.
Because we should find out, right?
Yep. It's a good idea and then if there's no show, then.
Then we proceed. Yep.
Another way in the interim, we're still getting commissioner's office to provide us with just some quotes and a plan and then we'll review that when it comes in.
Do the new services are in a period?
Yeah, did you for quite a few committees, haven't been up here yet, so we're kind of excited.
Okay, guys, so we'll move on to the next one. I guess now we'll talk about the electrician.
So when looking at the, the direction was to look at the last couple of years as to what we spend in electrical, like in electrician's fees. So twenty seventeen and eighteen, the cost was a hundred and twenty-five thousand, three thirty-nine, sixty-five. However, forty thousand, six eighty-eight was basically not part of our hydro incentive.
So the labor component was twenty-five, seven roughly?
Yeah.
And the other problem is you probably have more than one person working at this time, so typically they can't work alone. So your labor cost is probably not really accurate just on hours, it could be too, a too bad job for someone who's working.
Yeah, it would have been just the way it was built, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's what I mean. Yeah, I don't think it's worth it to have an electrician and stuff.
Is there work not getting done because we don't have one?
Um, delayed, yes. I can say delayed because there's times where we need something changed and we have to wait it out for the guy. I know out at the airport, we end up getting a guy in from Flinflon just because he knows a little more about the runway lights and stuff like that, so.
But realistically, that really wouldn't change much because unless your electrician that you hired has all those capabilities, you're still getting somebody from the south.
So the few retired electricians we have around, you tell me, we wait for them?
Sometimes we do, yes. Sure, certainly more they'll do, certainly they won't.
Because he's a full-time business all the time and, but I know there's some smaller guys around that could change lights and motors.
There's two smaller guys that we do utilize as much as we can.
But don't we have some requirements for workers comp and working alone procedures and insurance? And I'm not sure those guys have yet.
I think one guy no for sure has a, has his own company.
Does he?
Yeah.
I know two that do.
Bill has had the idea, many. So, we, Bill has had the idea many times, he's talked about the standing offer situation, right? It would seem to me electrical services would fit right in with that.
Absolutely. No, you're absolutely right, and that's why I said I'm surprised that you would have to wait. You know, for, I mean, I get it, if there's a light burnt out, you're gonna call the guy, he's not gonna come today, but he should be there in a couple of days.
Sir?
One hour.
When a light burnt out, it should be the electrician.
Nope.
Well, I know the answer's on. I'm very sure of it.
So, could, would it be reasonable to ask staff to come back with a list of electricians that we've had the standing offer discussion with?
Yep.
Yep.
Present us with that list?
Well, we shouldn't even ask, go one step further and make contact with those electricians to say, what would your rates be if we need?
I would assume that's all part of that.
That's, that's all part of the part.
Yeah, I would assume, and to make sure they have all these.
And in there, they have to show, uh, their WCB and their, uh, whatever it is.
There is two guys though that we do have local to do the smaller jobs.
Cause they'll, they'll need to provide us with their safety program, right, to provide us with their insurance documents, all that kind of stuff.
CDC compiled a list, was that just the contractors or is that a electrician?
Mm-hmm.
Contractors? Contractors, okay.
This wouldn't be hard to figure out because Aldrin would have all that.
There's electricians on there. Yeah, yeah.
Good, so you'll get back to us in a month or so?
Yep.
Uh, Gateway, Kiwitten Corridor, invitation to the AGM, is that the one in PA?
That's the one in Nippon, I think, yeah.
That's the one.
Nippon, I should say?
Yeah.
Um, does somebody want to go to that? I know I can't.
Anybody, anybody interested in reading about it?
Bill is. Bill, would you like to go to that AGM?
Uh, okay, I will.
There you go.
Probably can't travel.
Yeah, a resolution.
Chamber might be going, you may be able to tag along.
Okay, payroll and accounts, disbursement details.
So, we have period six, we would require resolution, the amount of one oh eight, four fifteen, ten. General for one eighty-eight, four ninety-nine, seventy-six, and EFTs for two fifty-seven, seven oh seven, sixty-two. We would also need another resolution for dispersments for northern building supply, um, for Mr. Ward and for Mr. Forrester. Some of these were, Stitco was fifty thousand, that was airport arena and, well, or water treatment plant and civic center for heating. Library was their twenty nineteen advance in the amount of forty thousand dollars. Morgan fuels fourteen thousand dollars airport fuel. And I don't know how they say it's Xylum is for some work there to the lift station. Does it help when I point those out or?
Mm-hmm.
Just some of the bigger ones is all I'm seeing, so we would require two resolutions.
On the Graham provide, uh, maybe I haven't noticed it before, but he provided us with this other report. And it shows the supplier name and then.
This one?
Yeah.
The account track report one there.
Yeah.
Could he give us the, cause he's got the GL account numbers there, so on the Stitco ones, um, could he provide us with the report for each of the account numbers, those GL numbers?
So, a report for what facilities, each facility?
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I'm gonna get to Stitco here.
So, you want a further breakdown of Stitco?
Yeah, so Stitco, for instance, like he's got account number two, three, one, five, nine, nine.
So, for each building?
For each one, if he could give us the breakdown of each of those GL account numbers?
Sure.
And I'm assuming it's probably a fairly easy port to pick.
Yeah. Do you want us to email that or bring it back to next meeting?
Could you email it to us all and we can have a look at it, cause I'm really interested.
In the heating for sure.
Can you be your water treatment plant in this building?
That's one of the center, yeah. There's airports too.
Yeah, cool, if you could do that, that would be very appreciated. Uh, Northern Urban Reserves Economic Development Forum, uh, that's in Thompson, April ninth and tenth. I think Bill, when, when's the gateway one, it's the ninth, isn't it?
The eighth, the eighth and fourth.
Yeah, again, I, I can't go to this one for two days in Thompson. Uh, I just can't do it. If, if somebody else would like to go.
Ideally, it would have been good for, if we could get someone to go, at least one person, just to report back on this.
Um, I can mark it down tentatively, I just might get a pro, I have a potential work conflict against if I can get out of it.
I would have gone to this, but that means I would miss half a day on the Tuesday because I need to be in Winnipeg the following day.
I've received an invitation, um, outside of Town of the Paw and I'm still undecided as to.
Yeah, so Carrie, if you can go, then I don't think the both of us need to be there, so.
I'm still undecided.
It's good if they lost out there.
I'll do a resolution for one for one, please.
Highway thirty-nine.
Yeah, quick, Carrie's made it off.
And if I am just asking for information.
No.
That's she just, she's committed.
Carrie's going.
Yeah, sure. Don't worry about that work commitment.
Yeah, Highway, Highway ten north, then right at thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. Straight.
Straight to it, I'm guessing.
Straight down.
Okay, so there'll be a resolution coming forward and, and we'll see who can go, but I'm, I'm sorry, I know I can't. Uh, by law enforcement seminar follow-up.
Oh, sorry, I guess I answered this in the other one. So, we sent the information out, we'll wait for it to come back.
No, the other thing was about changing stuff from the provincial, from the.
Oh, yes.
MBLA to POA.
But then you said there was conflicting information at AMM, so.
I sent it both to them, I sent everything to them and said, you give us some advice.
Okay, good enough. It was a good seminar though, the one that two, or three of us went to, I thought it was.
We actually had a very good conversation even when we went there, like just before we were leaving, um. So, yeah, hopefully we get something back very quick.
Uh, water to taxes, that's basically housekeeping.
Yeah, resolution that as of that date, whoever's got outstanding utilities will be added to taxes.
Uh, the Honorable Janice Philman is coming to the Paw in the fall, uh, we have some time to plan for that, uh, but we'll, we'll treat her well.
Are we gonna look at this or do you want the CDC to look at this?
No, we'll do it.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll take care of it. Yeah. It'll be similar to when the federal minister is in town.
Okay.
Uh, something, well, I can't, I'm jumping around here just a second, but something that I think of it, in the old days, we used to have a budget line for visiting dignitaries? For receptions and luncheons and that, I don't think we do anymore, do we?
They haven't for the last couple and I think that's very important.
Yeah, we need to.
There's a mayor's hospitality line.
Is there?
Not much of one, no.
How much?
It was ten.
Was it that much? Cause I think it was like they dropped that.
So, can we check into that? Because when we get these dignitaries in town, it's not unreasonable to put on a bit of a luncheon or something, right?
Get him a some sandwiches or. I want that. Get him a Larry's, sir.
Yeah, there you go.
Seventy dollar bottle of wine, shoes of gavel of AIDS, if you're.
Uh, okay, uh, okay, we need to tour the airport, guys and gals.
It's Saturday, Saturday the sixth or Saturday thirteenth?
Who can, who can go the third then?
The thirteenth is better for me.
Thirteenth works for me.
Thirteenth?
Yeah.
When's Easter?
That's when we follow the.
Um, like the twenty-first, someone.
So, Saturday the thirteenth.
Saturday the thirteenth? Nine?
So, is the no time lifted at the airport, Randy?
Sorry, what?
Is the no time lifted at the airport?
Nope, not for the fuel. Um, we just.
Nine AM, sorry?
Nine AM, yeah.
Yes, we just got notification on that, uh, we had, they put out three quick, uh, bids for that. One came in at twenty-one thousand for the cleanup and the replacement of everything and one came in at seven thousand, that does the exact same job. So, we're obviously gonna move forward with seven thousand dollar.
So, what ended up being the problem? But what was the problem?
There was something with the filter, it was disintegrating the filter and pieces were going into the fuel. So, when they did the testing, I'm sorry?
How come that happened?
I can't quite remember how they explained it, but it was something that, it was a treatment in the fuel that we didn't have before.
No, I read that, no, I read that, but how did, how do we put the wrong filter in a aviation fuel system?
It was my understanding, it was the correct filter, it was the fuel that changed and no one did anything.
Okay, so how do we then, what do we go back to the people that supply us a different fuel to say, you contaminated all this fuel and like?
Well, you would, you would think that the airport management company would have caught this, right? Now, to me, it wouldn't have been unreasonable. You would think there'd have been a discussion between the fuel supplier and the airport manager, Sam. We've changed something and you need to change something.
Yeah.
It seems like that discussion was never held.
Well, I think it still needs to be held because you've got a pretty big expense that you've got to learn from it, so that.
Well, I think that consultant that we hired is having that discussion.
Okay.
And I think it was the consultant we hired that discovered it.
Yeah. We had an opportunity to sell the fuel, the way it is, and, uh, they said that it would cost almost ten grand to get the test there in the first place, so it's not worth it. But we do have, um, I think you said Randy, it said they could use it for some of their practices and stuff.
Expensive fuel practices.
Yeah, but if you have no use for it anywhere else because everybody's scared to take it, it's better than nothing.
So, what's the outcome of that then? What, like, what do we learn from that?
Purge the tank and make sure that we know what we're getting.
Well, what do we learn from the issue, the root, the, the issue of this happening to us, like, how do we make sure it doesn't happen again?
We, we clearly need to have a meeting with the airport manager, right, and I'm hopeful on that Saturday, we can have some of these discussions. Because I'm under the impression that that's what we're paying for, is for them to manage the airport, right? And, um, we're sort of hands off, you know, and it's, I don't think it's unreasonable for Wasco, is that where?
Yeah.
I don't think it's unreasonable for Wasco to have had that discussion with the fuel supplier and then notify the town that you guys need to change something.
I'll have him prepared for, for you guys asking that question when you meet with him. When I did ask the question, he said that's why we're going through the testing, to make sure everybody knows what they're testing for.
And, and who, who did the issue sheet up for the tour, like to take a tour of the airport?
I'm not sure if that would have been.
Shauna, it was Shauna that did it.
Rowan?
Rowan, sorry, Rowan.
And she's the consultant, like she's the out of Winnipeg or she's?
She's here. The main guy is the manager out of Winnipeg, but they have someone here.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna ask the same question.
Yeah, that doesn't.
Whether we would pay for a guy to come up just out of a meeting with us on Saturday morning.
See, generally what has happened in the past is when we did sign this contract, it was them coming from Winnipeg regularly, like it was what, twice a month? So, now they have someone that's actually sitting here on site all the time and he travels back very seldom now.
So, why don't we just not have to pay for a guy to come all the way up here and just for us to just meet with the guys that are there and if he's their, their main guy?
You're more than welcome to meet with Rowan and that's what I'd suggested in first place, but he wanted to meet with you guys to talk to you about just the general contract and everything.
Well, should he pay his own wage way up then or is part of their sales bills, airport management?
I can tell them that.
I just say either that or coordinate it when he's on site.
For sure.
We don't wanna pay for a special trip, just for him to.
My, my other reason for asking was almost like there's, there's this looming thing he's going to ask us or something. Like he's, he's requesting, there's this, a bunch of things are going.
I think I feel a little out of place that most everybody had theirs done and he didn't get the opportunity to show bears and the operations.
But then I, but then we go back to the, I wanna beat this to death, but it's like, this is, I mean, the budget's a big thing for sure, but I mean, this big scheme of things is small, but, but he didn't tell us anything about the gas. I got, I got, I, I don't know, it just kinda seems like, is he, is he, I don't know, that's, that's why, I, cause I thought you did it up, just because, you know, we haven't been out there yet, just, just get this one down and over, that's where I thought it came from, so, okay.
So, they'll go back and say, we want someone to come prepared with an answer about the fuel and also we're not wanting to pay specially for someone to come down on a Saturday.
Yep. And, and we may have a general discussion with him about the management of the airport, the services they provide?
Yeah.
And, and just to see if it's meeting our expectations or our needs.
You would do that with him though versus Rowan, so.
Yeah, okay.
Sounds good?
Um, I guess we got a couple of things here in camera, that's it?
Yeah, I was gonna ask a couple of things, uh, the financial, so, maybe I'm, I'm behind on what, what do we get? The financial report for, like, when do we get the next financial report on, like, January, February?
He hasn't closed, I think he just closed off year end.
He just closed off, it was just finishing.
Yeah, yeah, so we probably within the next.
He's been working on budget.
Month?
So, we'll always be, we'll be like three or four months behind on?
Usually a month or two you can be, but usually we get about March, May, just because of the close off of year end.
Is that kinda difficult for us to decide how they make decisions on finances though, if we don't have, like, where we're at year to date sort of thing and? I, I don't know, I'm just asking a question, I'd expect that a few weeks after a month end that we should see something, is like, can you provide like a summary or?
I think the biggest issue that Graham is running into, and I'm not making excuses for him, I'm just saying that the, the reasons I've heard is air limitations within our current accounting program.
Yeah.
You know, um, so, I agree that having timely financial information is extremely important in financial decisions, so, you know, I think as soon as we get through budget, I think that should be his.
Priority for sure.
Number one priority is getting those financial statements put in order so that he can whip them off through the program. Whether he has to go back to the company, whether there has to be more help hired, whatever has to happen, but, yeah, we need to get timely information.
And I can speak to him just even if we can get a general summary.
Well, I mean, by department anyways, whether, what they've spent and where they're at, just overall, maybe not all the details, but there's a high level
Yeah.
spend and does it look like it's on track or not?
For sure.
And, and I know I'm gonna sound like a bit of a whiner on this one and I would have bent over and picked it up myself, but who's responsible for the garbage around the water treatment plant?
We had this conversation this morning, we had the guys cutting ice, that's why they didn't pick it up. We had the guy that called in sick and they were taking out the ice.
But the water treatment plant guys can't, they pick up those bottles and garbage out of there, like, we talk about pride and then you come into the department and it's like, it's.
Pride is your reputation and I would go back there.
And like I said, I would have picked it up myself, but there's a lot of garbage up there.
Yeah, there is.
There was lots of weather fish activity, rest was all over the place.
But I mean, for us, the guy coming into work, working in the water treatment plant, he must do a tour around the building, grab a garbage bag or a pound.
And no, he should do a tour around the building.
I know most of us were away last week, Randy, but did Randy manage and Sam talk about that room in the fire department?
They, they were supposed to meet and because Chris was away, they didn't meet. But I know there is ongoing, that, that's their plan moving forward. Unless they met Friday, but I don't know, I think Randy ended up going.
And Randy's away this weekend, yeah.
Um, new business for next meeting, we've got, um, just, yeah, there's some things I'd like to, if we could get some updates on. Um, all the outstanding consulting reports, you can find a little we're at with all of them, cause there's, there's a few, right?
Yeah, there's a.
A way to go with the.
Right, so for the next one.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah. Um, we should, I think it was Andre you had mentioned, somebody had mentioned about the committees that we're on right now, whether they're relevant or.
Yeah, that's.
We should talk about that, right?
Well, I mean, there's some that I've been on, like, for me, and I mentioned it to her, but I mean, I'm on committees that never ever met and we ask every month, uh, you know, every two weeks, uh, coalition. I'm not even sure.
Yeah.
And so, is there, are they active and if they're not, like, I'd like to help out elsewhere, that's, that's where they need some help of. Larry's meeting four times a week and, you know, Trevor's busy as hell, maybe.
That's a good discussion and even that came up with the consulting guy there saying that they removed, uh, council from all.
All committees.
All external committees because of various reasons.
Okay, so if we could.
So, we need to do that, but.
Discussion, yeah.
Yeah, discussion. Um, can we get an update on the Kelsey planning district? Where it's at, the whole thing? And could you ask him if, in, cause he's redoing the zoning bylaws, right? Does he have the condo bylaw in there? Cause we don't have a condo bylaw in our community.
I think that was part of what we requested.
Condos and granny suites?
Yeah, the small places, like, yeah.
So, if he's got that, if he can send that to us, that would be wonderful. And the other question I had about, had to do policies. Is there somewhere on our website that shows all our policies?
It's on your net, um, Netflix.
Is it on your own net?
It's on your own net.
My Netflix?
It's entertaining.
Do, do we have over nine hundred policies?
No, it's, some of them are deleted already or revised.
No, there was no one, there was no two, it all started at one hundred.
Oh, okay, alright, cause I, we passed that one tonight, it was like nine seventeen or something.
Yeah, it's in, can I just, can I?[1766.51]
Yeah. It's on part of the policies.
If you go into, um, your minutes and then you go into documents. And then you hit policies. And then you go into each one of those. There's all your policies. So how do you do that?
Documents, yeah.
Go into documents. And then if you go down here, it's policies. And then finance admin, there's all your finance admin policies.
Under there, yeah.
And then you can access them all.
There's still a lot of them though.
Yeah, there's lots of policies.
Some of them are redundant.
If you go over there, you'll see your.
Do we follow these or are they just there?
No, we follow a majority of them. I reviewed them last year, the year before.
Year before.
And we got rid of a bunch that we weren't following. We amended some that we were sort of following, but not, so we made it worded to the way we were doing the practice.
Okay, I'll look at these. I didn't know that was there.
Yeah, they're all there. Yeah.
Okay, anybody else got anything else for the next meeting?
Do you still want policies on the agenda?
Um, no, I'll look through here and then get back to you. I didn't know this was here.
Resolution deadline, when is that again?
For AMM?
Yes.
June 1st. Yeah, it is late, eh?
I'm pretty sure it's June 1st, resolutions have to be in.
Are we wanting to maybe put something towards the province on fire?
Fire, yes. We wanna move forward. We, we'd like to have a discussion to move forward with the firefighter protection. Similar to Saskatchewan, that Bill had said. And if we can get that to June districts, then.
I think they're expecting that out of us, period.
Good.
Um, I know Grant was supposed to be here today. Um, are we gonna try and re-invite him back for the next meeting?
Yes.
Right, your staff sergeant?
Oh, okay.
I seen that on there.
Okay, so we got a couple of things for in camera.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm reading policies here.
I'm sorry?
He's reading policies.
Oh.
I thought something.
So I could be on the committee?
Yeah?
You could be on the committee?
Yeah, I'm the, not a policy.
You're on it now. Come on, Travis.
You're on my team here, buddy.
It's good, you're a real man.
Okay, so we resolved that we now move ourselves into the in camera portion of the committee at all with Mayor Jakes and the Chair to discuss mattering, matters requiring our attention.
Wonderful. Thank you, Brian.